Thank you.
All right, I'm late. Here I am.
Excellent, Roy. Just in time. All right, it's just after 6:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees to order, and please rise now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
There's only a slight delay, but that's working well. All right, so we have some board presentations tonight. I thank those that are going to be presenting for being here. The first one is going to be from Pete Topping, who is the Executive Director of Peconic Bay Keepers, and he is going to talk about the Spring Meadow Lane marsh cleanup that they are requesting. So please, Pete, come to the podium and...
All right. Yep. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name's Pete Topping. I'm the Executive Director and Bay Keeper with Peconic Bay Keeper. We're an environmental nonprofit devoted to water quality issues, not only in Southampton but throughout the East End. So what I'm here tonight to ask permission from the board is to do a cleanup along Meadow Lane, and I'll give you a couple of reasons why in a moment. How do I advance? Do I just click back there?
I think he's gonna...
All right, next.
Yeah, just say next slide or something.
Next slide.
There you go.
So, you know, as you all know, the majority of Meadow Lane is private. We have some beautiful beaches, which get a lot of attention with surf rakes and people walking the beaches, picking up trash. But on the Shinnecock Bay side, we also have extensive marshland, and looking at the tax maps, Southampton Village is actually a pretty large landholder, especially around the vicinity of Dune Beach. There are other groups like the Peconic Land Trust, Southampton Town, but there's a lot of non-private, or what I would say, public wetlands along there. So when I was looking for a cleanup spot, we kind of came up with the idea of Dune Beach. Next slide, please.
Have you done this before there, Pete?
Not officially, not as far as a group. Next slide.
Yeah.
So, the reason why, the other reason why I'm bringing this up, some of you may or may not be aware, but that site is actually one of the sites for the New York State Horseshoe Crab Monitoring Survey. You've probably seen, or had Cornell Cooperative Extension apply for permission for parking waivers. But Peconic Bay Keeper, myself, and also Sally Kellogg from the South Shore Estuary Reserve, we're actually the site coordinators for that site. So we're out there 12 or more times a year, early in the spring, when these horseshoe crabs are spawning. If you haven't seen it before, it's pretty incredible. We have some nights where there's thousands of horseshoe crabs
Really?
coming up on this beach. It really looks like a National Geographic caliber wildlife show, right, you know, right in our own backyard here. So as we're walking along, actually, next slide, please, we see lots of things, not only horseshoe crabs, but last year, that slide on the left, that's a baby diamondback terrapin that I found in the middle of the road. Somehow, I'm able to see these things. But we also have, we have terrapins that use the marsh, they're nesting in there, feeding in there, and lots and lots of different shorebirds are using those marshes as well. Next slide, please. So as I'm walking along, counting these horseshoe crabs for this survey, the other thing that we see a lot of is marine debris. We're not talking about large, large things, but it's a lot of small stuff, things that fall off boats, beer cans, bottle caps, shotgun wadding, dock foam, all sorts of things that kind of get washed up, especially in the wintertime when we have those large tides. North wind gets pushed up in the marsh, and there's no one really walking these areas. There's no surf rakes. So a lot of that stuff just sits for years and years and years, and eventually degrades. And I took all these photos, I actually went down there yesterday morning, and you'll see, this time of year is really nice, and into the spring, because all the marsh, it's kind of like your lawn in the backyard, the marsh, all the grass is laid down. It's really easy to find things. There's no wildlife nesting. So what we wanted to do was to just host a volunteer event on, I believe it's Saturday, April 5th, in the morning. There's a low tide around 11 o'clock. And just get, you know, community members, we'd be doing coordinating. Also, I reached out to the South Shore Estuary Reserve. Ann Welker, Suffolk County Legislature Slater, she helps with the horseshoe crab monitoring, so she's interested in helping get the word out as well. And we just want people to kind of walk these marshes and look, you know, look for debris, large and small.
So does someone have to sign up to be a volunteer, or how does that work?
They could just, they could either sign up in advance or just show up. You know, we would, we would be there on the site and just have a sign-up sheet. We have those trash grabbers and bags and buckets. But we wanted to use Dune Beach kind of as our staging ground. You know, if people want to walk the, you know, the boardwalk by Moon Point, collect there and bring stuff, that would be great, too. But there's a lot of ground to cover and a lot of, again, there's a lot of small debris, some stuff's hidden. That one in the lower right is actually, I found, it's like a 20-pound rusty anchor. So you can imagine someone walking, walking through there when that grass grows and stepping on the anchor. That's not going to be a pleasant situation. Next slide, please. So just short and sweet benefits, community engagement, protecting wildlife habitat, nesting areas, and again, these marshes don't benefit from, from regular cleanup efforts, so they're kind of out of sight, out of mind, but they definitely get impacted. And last, so what we would want from the village would be parking waivers, if that's needed. This would be in April, so it's prior to the beach season. We would like to have either like a dump trailer or small dumpster for the day of the event. I was going to reach out to the Southampton Trustees as well. I'd spoken with Joe McLaughlin briefly about that. And of course, it'd be great if the village could help promote the event and, you know, encourage your community to show up. And I guess, sorry, one more slide. Now your turn. So if you have questions, please ask.
No, I don't have any questions. I think it's a great, great idea, and I appreciate your group taking the lead on this. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. No questions. It's terrific. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Topping, you know I'm very familiar with your organization, and thank you so very much, and I look forward to joining you that day as well.
All right. Thank you all for your support. And we would, we would actually, I should mention, we would, we would try and also just have like a rain date for that Sunday, just in the event that's really bad weather.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. All right, next will be a presentation on foil software by Kemp Wyatt, the Strategic Account Exec Next Request at Civic Plus. So are they zooming in? Okay.
Hello, can you guys see me?
Yes, we can.
All right, excellent. Hello, everybody. My name is Kemp Wyatt, and yes, I'm with Civic Plus, and I really appreciate you all for having me. Thank you so much. I am connected with you guys from my home office here in Raleigh, North Carolina. Did my screen come up okay for everybody?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Well, great. Well, guys, as far as an agenda today, I'm here, of course, to give a brief presentation of our all-in-one of the foil software, Next Request. So I'm going to start off by telling you guys just a little bit of background information about Next Request and what makes it unique, as well as how it fits into Civic Plus experience. I'll then run through a brief demonstration of both sides, the public-facing side and the internal admin view. I'll show you guys how both the public will submit foil requests and how Kathy and colleagues will, of course, respond to those foil requests. And then I'll, of course, answer any questions you guys might have. So, guys, Next Request is the only foil solution out there that was purpose-built from the ground up to be an all-in-one foil management solution. It was actually a startup out of the Bay Area in California, of course, now part of Civic Plus. Some of the big boys and girls that we work with are here on the screen, places as large as Los Angeles, New Orleans, Miami, Raleigh, the entire state of Iowa, the Massachusetts Office of the Comp Controller, the Washington Secretary of State, here in North Carolina, you know, Wake County, Winston-Salem, Durham, Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, the North County Board of Elections. And in New York, we're working with some of your neighbors, Riverhead, Patchogue, and then places all the way up to Albany County, Buffalo, and the Buffalo Police Department. I've worked with them as well. I'll quickly run through as well, smaller agencies like Johnstown, Canandaigua, North Castle, also places like Middletown, Amira, Okeechobee, North Tonawanda, Warren County, and Albany County as well. And yeah, Kathy and I have been working on this project since August, believe it or not. So of course, her working closely with Eileen and the mayor as well. And one thing that's really great is all of our customers, over 1,000 agencies that are using Next Request, we really treat everybody as consultants. So we've been continuously developing new features, making the portal more efficient, based on the feedback from our customers, you know, who are working in this day in, day out. And just a quick note about Civic Plus, the village, of course, is already using numerous Civic Plus solutions, website, Civic Engage, C Click Fix, Recreation Management as well, or I apologize, I scratched that. But of course, today, we're talking about our other records request tools as well. But if the village is ever interested in any other solutions, we really are the only GovTech company out there with this modern civic experience, where all these solutions work together, talk together, integrate together for seamless, frictionless experiences for staff, but also, of course, more importantly, for village residents. So Next Request, there are two sides of it. There is a public-facing side that can be simply linked or embedded on your Civic Plus website, and then there's an internal admin view. Both sides of it are ADA compliant, accessible, both for the public and also for village staff. So here's how your neighbors at Patchogue have it simply linked on their website. So Civic Plus website, very similar to you all, and you'll see here, they have a note, open records request can be submitted here, foil requests. So it can be simply, as simple as a link, just like that. And this is Next Request. It is a modern online portal. It is highly configurable to match your website, your design. Here's some others. Here's Albany County's, just giving you guys an idea. Notice background image, logo, FAQ information, even a link back to your agency's website. Here's Buffalo's. And I always like to show San Diego's, because I mean, come on, check out that background, right? You guys can have a pretty similar, beautiful water view. So guys, notice, some of these portals have this search button. These are over 36,000 requests that San Diego has received, processed, fulfilled, denied, but then decided to publicize. Now, some agencies don't use this at all. Some agencies pick and choose what requests to publicize. It is in full control over Kathy and you all, what requests you want to put in here. But the idea is, this is to be as transparent as possible, but also to cut down on duplicate foil requests. The idea is, the requester can come in here and search for what they're looking for before making a new request. So just to be clear, again, by default, all of the requests and all of the records stay private between your agency and the Requestor. But when Kathy closes a request, or when Kathy releases a record to the Requestor, she can also publicize it. And so we can, you know, the public can search by keyword, they can sort by department. We can see exactly what this recent request was. Not a great example, it was a duplicate. Let's go to one where they produced some records here. Okay, so here's the actual request from the agency involving the police department, and you can see, again, exactly what happened when the name of the document that was released. San Diego closed the request with this message and then decided to publish it, meaning anybody in the public can view the request, view the responsive records, whatever, you know, download, print, read through them, whatever they need to do. But again, these are only here because San Diego wanted them to be. Now, the other part, of course, is the intake form. This is also highly configurable to meet the village's needs. Let's take a look at Patchogue's as well. So, I'm sorry, guys, if you can hear my three-year-old, my wife is trying to do her best to wrangle our two sons, we got a three-year-old and a one-year-old here, so I apologize if that audio is coming through. But, so the Requestor types in and makes their request here, and they plug in their information below. This form is infinitely configurable to meet the village's needs. A department selection can be allowed to commonly requested, common departments that are involved in foil requests. And I'm going to come over here to my demo portal. One great feature we have is we can direct the public to your website for frequently requested records. For example, if I type in the word "budget" here, an alert pops up, letting the Requestor know, they don't necessarily need to submit a foil request for budget records, that could be on your website already. Same thing with, you know, minutes, agendas, things like that, commonly requested items that the public might not be aware are on their website. Or you can direct Requestors to other agencies entirely. So this can, again, help to cut down requests that don't make sense, or requests that the village does not hold those records. So I'm just going to call this a sample request here. Requestor plugs in their info. It's very easy. We do not require an account to be created, which is great. Requests come in outside the portal, they can easily be inputted by staff, input, rather, by staff with these fields down here. Say like an email comes into Kathy versus this form, she could just copy that information and put it on behalf of the Requestor and notate how that request came in. Now, once the request is submitted, the Requestor is going to get a confirmation email. Kathy will also get an email, letting her know that a new request has been submitted. And this is the admin view of this request. This is now the inside, the staff view. Any action Kathy would ever need to take, and staff, of course, happens right here from this page. We assign each request a unique ID number. We assign the due date automatically. The text of the request will be here. So from here, if Kathy can fulfill it, she can upload a record. Or if she needs to assign this request to departments or staff, she can do so here. So let's say this request is going to involve a couple of our departments, Parks and Rec and Public Works. As these departments are assigned, notice, the staff members from those departments are automatically added. So each one of those staff members gets an email, letting them know, they can now come work off of this page with us. Every action that is taken on this request gets logged here in this timeline. So if, you know, this is a complex request, everyone's working off the same page, very easy to see in chronological order what's been done, what's left to be done. We can email the Requestor from here, we can keep track of staff time, you know, lots of, lots of options as far as adding staff individually. The uploader is very powerful. There is no file type limitation. More importantly, there's no file size limitation. So massive files can be processed through here. We can drag files over, or we can simply find our responsive records on our desktop. By default, the documents are going to be staff-only visibility, and we have powerful built-in redaction tools that are available to unlimited staff members. But let's say this document doesn't need to be redacted, we can just go ahead and release it to the Requestor right here. Now, notice, there's two options. This is where we could put just this one PDF into the public reading room, if we wanted to, or we're going to release it just to the Requestor. And as we release the record to the Requestor, we can have some standardized language here. So, notice, we're not trying to email it or, you know, transmit it, we're just changing the visibility to, within the portal. The member of the public, whoever submitted this request, they get a confirmation email. When they submit the request, it looks like this, have your agency name. This is a custom message that you can have, you know, going to them. And the Requestor has their own view of this page. So when we release the record to them, they get an email update that looks like this. Document's been released along with the message. So the Requestor can click either of these links, which brings them back to this portal right here, and they'll have their own simple view, where they can view the record, download it, print it, whatever they need to do. We also have powerful batch redaction tools, where, you know, hundreds or thousands of documents can be uploaded and redacted all at once. Email extraction tools as well to make those email requests much more simple. And then when the request is done, we'll close it out. And then by default, the request stays private between the village and the Requestor, or we can publish it, put it in the public reading room, or limit the visibility internally if it's sensitive. Every request is tracked in a queue for easy logging, you know, very easy to see there are open requests, or requests that came in within a certain date range, or due within a certain date range, or which staff are working them, which departments are assigned. There's also a powerful dashboard here, kind of like a high-level overview for Kathy to see everything going on, how many requests are open, how many are overdue, please ignore that. This is what employee one over here at the city account, a lot of overdue requests, but, you know, we'll give a nice pie graph, but also some analytics to look at, like, for example, last week, last month, last year, the volume of requests, the volume by department, the timing is by department. So truly an all-in-one foil management system. I try to do my best to keep it in a reasonable timeframe for the board here, but any questions that I can answer, anything I could expand on?
So how do you assign the, how would the administrator assign the work to a specific department or individual for, you know, requesting the specific information?
Great, yes. So when the request comes in, Kathy will read the request, and she'll determine if she needs to route it to departments or staff. And right here, under Staff Assigned, is where she will assign it out.
I see.
So I'll make another just quick request here, show what that looks like, just a brand-new one. So a request comes into Kathy, this is what the page looks like with a brand-new request. She'll read the request
Yeah.
And she, and then if it needs to go out to departments or individual staff, like say she needs to add in Eileen
Right.
It can be this easy, just like that. Eileen's name would be right here. Everyone's name who works on foils in the village would be listed out right here.
Yeah.
Just like that. Eileen's been added. She gets an email, letting her know, and she can now access this page. This is the email that Eileen would get, letting her know she's been added as support staff, the text of the request with a link that would bring her directly to this page.
Okay, excellent.
So staff can be added individually, or you can have departments with assigned contacts that automatically get added. Like, for example, we choose Public Works, and notice, Ron was automatically added
Yeah.
Inside Assign Public Works.
All right, thank you, Kemp.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to, I'd just like to thank the village administrator, the village clerk, and the board for this presentation. You know, I've been trying to get this type of technology for foil, for the village in order to streamline, and I'm so happy to see that now we have this, this module that can just be input into our Civic Plus, and I hope that we can implement it as soon as possible. I think it's a great service.
Okay.
In terms of timelines, so that, this has an internal clock for each segment of the process? Kemp?
That's right.
And with...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, the due date is an automatic calculation. That can be any amount of days that the village desires. And the system is smart, as far as the time of day the request came in, if it's a night, if it's a weekend, if it's a holiday. You can even add your custom holiday calendar in here, so that that due date calculation is correct.
I see. Thank you. And about the redaction, I guess, one way of redacting would be for a particular word or phrase that would automatically redact? Is that, from all the documents, is that, is that what you were alluding to before?
Sure. I can show you guys quickly what that would look like. So as a document is uploaded, we can view the document in the portal, and then if we need to redact it, we can access the redaction tools. And these redaction tools, again, would be unlimited to, available to unlimited staff in the village. And there's multiple options. You can redact entire pages or page ranges if it's very sensitive. You can highlight text to redact, just like as I let go of the mouse, it applies the redaction. And the village can have custom redaction reasons listed out right here to easily label the redactions. We could also search the document and automatically find socials, phone numbers, emails, postal codes, dates. You guys can even configure your own custom redaction patterns, for example, New York driver's license numbers or employee ID numbers. Or we can type in someone's name, a word, a phrase. It's kind of like Find and Replace, but it's Find and Redact. We found 23 results across the entire document. We can click through and find exactly where they are. And with one click, redact all of them, just like that, and label them at the same time.
Thank you, Kemp.
And that document can be, create a PDF from that document, and we can do what we want with it, in addition to...
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, so right now, this is in a draft stage, so we can kind of review it. If we need to touch up some of the redactions, we can, like, if we need to make them bigger, if we need to change the reason, if we need to delete them. And then when we're, when we're done, when we're ready to burn in these redactions, we're going to hit Save, and that's where we create an entirely new document, preserve the original, but we burn in the redactions. The portal is both HIPAA compliant, we also map to CGS security protocols for law enforcement. And then we have the original, and we just take the original file name and add "redacted" at the end of it. So very easy to distinguish. And then you can see now that these redactions are burned in. And if we need to, we can open the redaction tools again and redact the redacted document. We also create a redaction log at the end for you as well.
How is it costed? Is it based on number of foils, or is it just a monthly license, or how is it costed?
It's an annual license, and there are some discounts available because you guys are already Civic Plus customers. But it's a combination of the features and the number of admins that are needed. The plan that Kathy is interested in is the one that includes the redaction tools and the batch redaction tool, which I did not show you guys. But basically, the same redaction capabilities that I just showed, you can extrapolate that across 10, 100, 1,000 documents all at once.
And again, didn't you have multiple administrators?
Absolutely, yes. So the plan that the village is considering allows for 10 administrators and unlimited staff users.
Yeah. Well, that's a lot. I don't know if we need that many, but I appreciate that.
Just to piggyback onto what the mayor was asking, first of all, thank you so much for this presentation. My question is, as far as the administrators that have access to it, is there a log as far as who's logging in, what they're looking at, so on and so forth? And is there any process to make sure that if something is redacted and burned, and it's done by accident, because it is new and training, that, I think you did say that it is saved in its full content?
That's exactly right.
So it's, it's two parts. So the logging of the administrator, who's going into it, time, and so forth, and the securing of firewalls. If you can talk a little bit about that for me, thank you.
Great question. So there are three user levels within the portal. There are the top level is called Administrator. They can see every single request for every single department. The next level down is called a Department Admin. So when they log in, think like Building, think Finance, et cetera, when they log in, they will only see foils involving their department. And the lowest user level is a Support Staff user. When they log in, they will only see requests in their queue that they have been assigned to. And only admins have the ability to release documents to the Requestor and contact the Requestor from the portal. So that responsibility can really be locked down to just Kathy, if you guys would like to. And as far as security, we use AWS for our servers, the industry standard there in cloud computing.
Okay.
Every year, we go through an independent SOC 2 Type 2 security audit to show that it would be the highest standard for security. Everything is encrypted. We take security extremely seriously.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I think one more to add on. We do log how many views this request had, or documents have in the portal. So we can see, you know, the amount of times it's been viewed by staff members, if needed.
And that log also gives time and stamp and what they're looking at, so on and so forth, yes?
Yeah, exactly.
Great.
Every, every action gets logged here in the portal.
And how long have you been doing this?
Next Request has been around, I believe our first customer was back in 2015. Might have been a little bit before that. I personally have been working with Next Request for three years.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Scott, do you have any questions?
I actually do not at this time. All right. Well, thank you very much for joining our meeting here this evening, Kemp. We'll let you go back to the three-year-old.
Thank you. I apologize if that audio came through.
No, actually, we didn't hear, we didn't hear anything. So it's, it's all good.
Zoom has a great audio cancellation. Thank you guys very much for having me. I sincerely appreciate it, and I hope everybody has a great rest of the evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm going to call upon Ryan Winter of VHB to give us an update on what the firm, VHB, has been working on in terms of traffic mitigation and other conditions.
Just give me one second to log in. Logged in before to kick me out.
Really? Sage, can you do anything to help?
I got it here. Okay.
Good?
Says I'm in.
All righty. Sage, what do you think? I see Roy again.
He turned his camera on.
There we go.
All right. So, thank you, Mayor and Village Board, for having me this evening to kind of go through what we've been working with, working on in the village. Ryan Winter, I'm with VHB Engineering. I'm the traffic consultant who's supporting the traffic issues that are going on throughout the village. We've been working diligently over the last six months or so, I would say at least, reviewing the various issues going on throughout the village, with a big focus on the priority issues, which are the cut-through issues, which are the cut-through traffic through the residential streets and the speeding that goes along with that. So, we've been preparing a bunch of options that you'll see here today that are concepts to try and mitigate some of those issues. None of these have been finalized. In fact, a lot of these have just recently been put together and shared with some of the staff and the village trustees and board members. So, we're just really looking to put this out there and get some reaction from all of you and from the community and see best paths to move forward. This is not the, the end of the effort either. This is really just kind of focusing initially on the areas that are of greatest concern to the village, based on our conversations with administrators, the Police Department, and DPW. So, what you're looking at here, and I'll zoom in a little bit, is Somerset. If you recall, last time I was here, we had a couple, few concepts where we looked at converting a portion of Somerset to One Way from Pleasant Avenue to McGee Street. Taking a step back from that, based on some feedback we received, we're looking at alternative measures to calm the traffic along that corridor, and keeping those on the table, but just as an initial effort to see how effective we can try and reduce traffic and alleviate some of the concerns that are going on in Somerset, specifically the speeding and the high rate of speed around these curves that are located on Somerset Avenue. So, just sorry to zoom out a little bit picture here. So, north is to the right, and this concept, there's two sheets here that I'll go through. Really what we're doing here is trying to identify potential solutions, and then we can pick and choose from what you see here to develop an initial plan to try and quell some of the traffic issues that are going on, specific to Somerset, because this certainly has been one of the areas where the brunt of the traffic has been occurring, and there's also been a couple incidents over the last year or so as a result of, of that traffic. So what you see here, currently Somerset Avenue does not have any real striping on the roadway. What we're proposing is to establish a double-yellow line down the middle of the road with a shoulder-edge line, and what that does is it effectively reduces the visual width of the lane that the driver is traveling in and encourages slower speed and gives them a more clear area to drive in. It also provides an area away from the travel lane that's on the pavement for parked vehicles or pedestrians or bicyclists. It's not a formal area for any of that, but it's, it's a shoulder area that can be used for a multitude of purposes, and it's better defined than what is out there currently. So you'll see this as I, as I'm gonna pan from south to north along the corridor, you'll see this throughout.
And can you explain the green areas, Ryan?
Yes. So, the green areas that are shown here are, there's two different scenarios. These that are not within an intersection, they are bumpouts that are effectively used to reduce the overall width of the road and further reduce speed of traffic as you make that curve. You'll see this on both inside curves for the, the 90-degree turns on Somerset. It doesn't allow for vehicles to kind of cut that corner, if you will, as, as tightly, and forces them to stick within the travel lane and go at a slower, safer rate of speed as they're making that maneuver. This, there's a variety of treatments that we could do here. Both of these curve sections, I'll get to the next one in a second, are, there's curve that's existing out there right now. So we would look to maintain that curve and just bump it out into the road, not beyond the existing, not beyond the shoulder that we're proposing here, but just to kind of tighten that more physically-defined that, that limit around these, around these corners where there seem to be some, some incidents.
Mm-hmm. And the black markings are these humps, speed humps?
Yeah. So the black are the proposed speed humps. So, two different types of treatments we're looking at here. The bumpout is like a horizontal treatment, if you will, kind of reducing the width, and then the other common treatment is a vertical treatment. So something that makes it uncomfortable to go over the roadway at a higher rate of speed. So, looking at combinations of both of those to alleviate and reduce the, the traffic and speeding issues through, not only Somerset, but you'll see this is a, a common theme as we look through the presentation. So, several areas that we're looking to potentially install speed humps on Somerset. Again, this is all up for discussion as we move forward and continue to progress these plans. But there's speed humps currently out on Halsey in initial phase. I think these would look to be like a temporary installation similar to those at these approximate locations, which we can refine as we continue to move forward. But again, this is focusing on the, the curves in Somerset. As I move further south, you'll see another set here. So, four all in total on this plan for Somerset in terms of speed humps on the approach and as you exit both of those curves. And again, you see here the, the inside curve bumpout, if you will, to reduce the travel lane and roadway width around this curve. Two other things I'll just point out on the sheet, and then we'll move on. At Pleasant Lane itself, the intersection, the curb radii that go into that roadway from Somerset are oversized. They have, and not that they're incorrectly designed, but they don't need to be that big. So, to reduce and tighten the roadway geometry, the thought was to, again, reduce that radii around Pleasant Lane. And then, as you can see here, we're also bumping out the curb in that location to further reduce the overall road width on Somerset to give that look that, you know, where you're in a tighter geometry here and you need to slow down to be safe. And then, the last thing I'll point out here is, it's a little difficult to see, but the speed feedback devices that have been used throughout town, those are an effective measure to allow vehicles to kind of self-monitor their, their speed. They may be going faster than they realize. So, I know the village has done a good job kind of placing these throughout the village already, and this would just be another good example of where they might be utilized. So I'm gonna jump to the next sheet, which is the northern half of Somerset. Again, a similar treatment here at Pleasant where we're tightening up the geometry at the intersection to reduce the...
Does that prevent someone from, like, whipping around the corner? Is that what the idea is?
Correct. Yeah. So this is a always stop, so conceivably, you should be, everybody should be stopping here anyway, but this, this radius that we're proposing will make you have to turn slower even after the stop sign rather than going onto Pleasant at a higher rate of speed.
Yeah.
And then, at the northern end at McGee, this is a raised intersection, which I think we might have touched on previously, but essentially, it's the same idea as a speed hump, but it's essentially a table of raised pavement that encompasses the entire intersection. So...
And it looks like you've realigned the, the stop lines.
Correct. So the stop lines have been relocated slightly on McGee and South McGee. That's to tighten the geometry in addition to the new curb lines here. You see the green is some areas that are currently pavement that would be proposed as grass shoulder, and the lighter gray hatching in the middle is the area where we would have the three-inch raised pavement in the intersection. So you would be putting down an additional layer of asphalt in that area to, to make that work, and that would be graded so that you can maintain the drainage that's currently out there and not, and minimize your drainage modifications, which obviously has cost implications.
And it would be low, a low rise, so it wouldn't affect snowplows as much?
Correct. So there's two lines on the approach here, and again, this is something we'll refine as we move on, but there's a six-foot segment where it ramps up from the current grade to the table.
So it's a low, slow rise?
Correct. Yeah. It's, it's enough, the plows will need to know where it is so they can flag it and kind of lift, but they're, they manage through them without problem, based on the experience that I've seen. So...
What, what, what does the table do that the stop signs that are already there aren't doing? What is it accomplishing in addition to the stop signs that are already there at that intersection?
It reinforces, Roy, good question, just having to traverse through that intersection at a slower rate of speed even after you stop. I think having the stop sign there is great, but if it's a relatively quiet intersection and all the traffic is coming in a single direction, the inclination is to kind of roll through those stop signs, so this would help kind of slow down those vehicles that opt to go in that direction. So that is...
Just a quick question, Chief.
Yeah, sure. Before I move on.
Chief, are there a lot of stop sign violations in that neighborhood?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that would probably be a benefit then? Yeah.
So, you know, the hope with those improvements would be that we can slow traffic and, you know, maybe make people think twice about going that way because you have all these obstacles you have to, to get through, which takes us to the next road to the east, which is Bishop's Lane. And there's already an existing issue with cars traveling down the Hill Street from Bishop's. And Bishop's is, as you know, much more of a straight shot all the way from Moses Down. There's a stop sign up at Bernadine, but after that, there's, there's really no way to stop the cars currently. So we're looking at some options here, and again, just given the, the way the road lays out, the vertical option seems to be the one that would be most effective. So we're proposing a few speed humps here. Again, nothing set in stone, just something for the, the board to consider. And this would go up three, a series of three speed humps from Bernadine south to Hill.
Is that Bernadine is where there's a stop sign now?
That's correct.
Currently?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, another potential intersection, raised intersection at South McGee. There is not a requirement to have a raised intersection be stop-controlled, so this would effectively act as a, a speed table as you're going south on Bishop's through South McGee, and it would also...
It would also slow people down when making that right turn.
Correct. As they're approaching Bishop's from South McGee.
Yeah.
They would have a, a change in roadway elevation that they would have to maneuver. And again, we're saying change of roadway grade is three inches. It's not like we're doing like a six-inch or anything major, but it's, it's enough that you would feel it when you're driving, and it will encourage you to slow down.
Or after you do it once, you won't do it again?
Uh, yes. Ten, well, yeah, I think that, you know, again, the way the ramps are set up, it's not gonna do any damage to your car or make you lose control, but it is, it's an uncomfortable ride, so it, it, you know, it's not something that you're gonna be wanting to do on a regular basis.
Okay.
So we'll leave that section of the village, and one of the other areas that obviously is critical is Ox pasture. They see a lot of cut-through traffic from the village downtown off of First Neck.
Because it parallels Hill Street.
It traverses, you know, just south of Hill Street and runs all the way to Lee Avenue, which, you know, we know about the issues at Lee. We've already installed some speed humps there. But a couple options that we were looking at to try and help the Ox pasture traffic issue. This first one is more to try and reduce the speeding. It's not gonna eliminate the cut-through traffic, but it does provide or force vehicles to maneuver around a series of bumpouts. And the idea here is that instead of just having a straight shot down a half a mile of road, you have these bumpouts, and the width is based on the existing roadway width. These are standard traffic calming treatments that are used throughout the country. I don't know that there's any in Southampton currently, so people might not be familiar with it, but essentially, these would be curbed areas with signs that would kind of force you to work around here, not reducing the lane widths to any extent that two-way traffic can't go past here, but it would just, if there is two-way traffic, it would make you kind of work around as if there was a parked vehicle or something on the side of the road. So it, it tends to slow traffic. Typically, these are, are installed in a series. We're showing one here just as a sample to kind of visualize it a little bit and see what this would look like. This is also something we could use in other locations, but just, you know, as an alternative to the speed humps and tables, the vertical, this is a, a good option to consider.
Could those preclude a person from parking there?
In that, in those segments, yes. You wouldn't be able to park within that. So it's called a, the, the name of it's below. It's called a chicane. It's an interesting name for it, but...
You just need some signage so people wouldn't park on the underside opposite the chicane, because then you really would have a, a narrowing issue there, wouldn't you? I think you'd have to prevent parking opposite the chicane.
Yes. That, that's a good point, Roy. You would need some signage there for parking and to give traveling vehicles just a heads-up that they're approaching the chicane. And similarly with the speed humps, you know, there would be a series of signs as you're approaching to just advise the, the drivers that they're coming on.
I think that's mandatory by state, state law, isn't it?
Uh, it's, it's standard. I, I don't recall if it's mandatory or not, but it's common practice to have those warning signs on the approach to those, yes.
Yeah.
And then, just as an alternative, throwing out there, along Ox pasture again, identifying this as a, you know, an alternative to Hill Street essentially in, in the afternoons, would be completely closing off a small segment of Ox pasture to not allow traffic to continuously go from First Neck to Lee on Ox pasture. So this is at Halsey Neck, proposing to completely close down this, you know, 50-foot segment here and force, and essentially, Ox pasture's a dead end at this point. So if you're to the right side or the east of this green rectangle shape, you would have to head back towards the village to go anywhere. You wouldn't be able to access Halsey Lane. And similarly, from Halsey Lane, you wouldn't be able to get east on Ox pasture.
Well, you'd either have to go down to Hill or up to Great Plains.
Great Plains, correct.
Oh.
So, again...
Well, that stops traffic.
Yeah. A little, a little more extreme, obviously, and other considerations we have to look at as well in terms of emergency access and, and that type of thing. But depending on the, the level of concern of traffic on Ox pasture, this is a potential solution.
Ryan, with respect to emergency access, how would that work with the, the, the second option?
So what we would likely do is, I think we're proposing guide rail here now. There's a couple other options you can do with removable bollards that would make it possible for emergency vehicles to remove them and traverse that area. To get to the west side of Ox pasture, just based on where a lot of the emergencies are coming from, I think they'd be coming from Hill Street and would likely just go down Halsey Neck anyway. So I don't see this as a big impediment to emergency services, but again, something we would certainly run by, and this is something we're just coming up with, so it's...
What kind of response time effect would there be on removable bollards?
Uh, it's just the time to get out. There's different types of removable bollards. Some are automated and some just literally have to just unscrew or uncrank and, and move. So, those are things we would look at, you know, with, with the emergency services, but something to, something to consider. And then the next few are similar treatments on speed humps, just looking at several different corridors that are a priority.
West Prospect is definitely a main east-west artery.
Based on, based on issues that we've seen in talking with the, the village, Police Department and the DPW. So West Prospect looks like a, a great option for the speed humps as well. It's another straight stretch. The driveways are, there's segments where the driveways are spread out pretty well, so you can incorporate these without really impacting home owners directly. So as you see here, I'm looking, sorry, I'm kind of going back and forth, but this is Halsey Street on the left side of my screen here up top, and as we head to the east, we have a series of three in total, two before High, and then one between High and South, and then as you approach North Sea Road, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything further.
Yeah, you come up that hill there.
Correct. Yep. And then continuing to the east on Prospect, again, North Sea Road, and this is all kind of the same corridor, right? A lot of cars come from Powell or from North Main and work their way across.
Well, they all use that as their cut-through.
Right.
Yeah.
So, looking to, we're not cutting this off completely, but we're just making it a little less convenient for them to, to go this route. So again, a series of three speed humps between... speed humps between North Sea Road and North McGee.
You mean North Main?
North, North Main, I'm sorry, yes. At the west end of West Prospect, at Palom Street, I know this corner has been an issue in the past with kind of cutting this corner. So here we have a couple different things to consider. One is another speed table here to force vehicles to slow down as they're approaching this intersection in advance and then kind of tightening the striping here. Right now, it's hard to see, but if I zoom in, the existing striping is shown on here in a faint yellow. You can see it kind of favors vehicles kind of taking that turn at a higher rate of speed. What we look to do is force them to make more of a 90-degree right turn as they approach and do this at a slower rate of speed. Again, associated likely with additional signage as you approach.
Would you push the grass out there on that radius as well?
We can look at that. I think this radius was established for like emergency vehicles and larger type trucks, so there might be an ability to shrink that somewhat, but...
But if you have the table, I think you're not going to be able to go that fast anyway.
Correct, yep. But again, we're, this radius that we're striped here is designed for passenger vehicles, so there may, we'll just have to see what that does for trucks.
Yeah, we'd obviously want to check with the fire department.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure the striping will do much because people just go over the striping anyway.
Yeah, you...
It's not going to stop the traffic.
Well, none of this stuff is going to slow everybody, but you'd be surprised how effective sometimes putting like a narrower lane, it does make, give people the feel that they have to drive slower because they don't have such a wide...
Ed used to be a Formula One racer.
I'm Italian.
He's Italian!
Unless it's solid, I don't look at the stripes.
No stripes and no signs, got it. Okay. So that's the first set of drawings. And then transitioning a little bit into some other areas of town, we're also looking to propose some improvements up by the railroad station on Railroad Plaza. I'm going to zoom in again here. So right now, Railroad Plaza, I'm sure you're all aware, is a fairly wide area of pavement.
And people go fast.
Yep, and it's, it gets a little bit unorganized when trains come and go and there's, you know, people that are busy leaving this parking lot or getting their ride share. And then with the school here, you know, obviously, safety is of importance. So seeing what we could do to try and streamline some of the traffic patterns in this area, and one of the most obvious things we saw, initially at least, is to propose a raised median from North Main Street east to Maple. This would be seven or eight feet wide and maintain a 16-foot minimum travel lane, both in the eastbound and westbound directions, which would be adequate for the cars that are parked in the diagonal parking existing on the south side proposed on the north side to get in and out. And also provide some pedestrian refuge from anyone that's using these crosswalks and better define where cars are traveling. So if someone's pulled over, you can't just, you're around them so easily. It kind of gives a little more definition to the roadway. And then just panning to the east a little bit, looking to incorporate a formalized crosswalk, again, right at the train station to accommodate the people that are going to this parking lot to the south side of Railroad Plaza and also this proposed ride share, not ride share, I'm sorry, but ride app and taxi area. I got to fix that. On the east side of the circle here to better accommodate some of the people that are coming off the train and needing to catch an Uber or a Lyft or whatever the various modes of...
That was also something that was suggested by the restaurants that are on Elm Street at that end.
Yep.
Because they have a lot of people arrive by Uber or taxi and there's no organized place to do that really on Elm Street. So the suggestion was, why don't we have something at the train station that could also be used by the restaurants? Because a lot of people call Ubers to pick them up, and this would be the location where, like an airport, where you go and pick up the cars opposed to having them idling on Elm Street, which is a narrower street.
Yeah, and Elm is just beyond the area I'm showing here to the right, as most of you are probably aware, and it's a short walk to this area from those restaurants, so that makes sense.
This was something that not only the restaurants actually brought up, but also some of the residents said that they, you know, don't really like all the Ubers idling on Elm Street across from their house.
Right. Okay. So I'll move on. There's no other questions. And then, you know, as Hampton Road is getting repaved and restriped, the plan is to incorporate bike lanes. They already exist, but kind of better situate them within the revised traffic patterns on Hampton Road. So while we're looking at that, we looked at some opportunities to extend bike lanes to some other generators that might, people might want to bike to. So one of those locations is the intermediate school off of Leland Lane, just opposite David White's. So what's shown here is a concept which maintains essentially the existing lanes of traffic along Leland. It also maintains the parking lanes and the drop-off lanes on Leland and adds a bike lane in both directions to accommodate bikers that are coming from Hampton and wanting to get to the intermediate school. So you can see just the idea of the section here. You have a seven-foot parking lane on each side.
It's a very wide road.
Five-foot, yes, it is a very wide road. Five-foot bike lane and then 11-foot travel lanes. The bike lanes would terminate at this southern entrance to the bus circle at the intermediate school. As you continue south and to the west here, the road does narrow a bit, so the bike lane wouldn't be able to continue. But the thought is that a lot of the trips that are coming down this roadway would be accessing that school property. And then...
Is the road like 46 feet wide there?
It varies in width, but yeah, it's almost 50 feet wide in a few locations.
Well, that makes people go faster.
Yeah. Yep, it'll help with the school zone speeds for sure.
Yeah.
And then finally, the other location, this is the last concept I have, I know this is a lot of information, is at the east end of Hampton Road at Flying Point where Route 27 comes in. Downs Family Park is down Flying Point Road from here, so looking to incorporate some bike lanes to access that park. We are able to do that with the existing pavement width. The bike lanes, both on Leland and here, don't involve any widening of the roadway. They're all using the existing pavement width. So in this situation, there's no parking on Flying Point Road, so we would have two 11-foot lanes and then a five-foot bike lane at a minimum on each side as you get to the park. South of the park, Flying Point Road does narrow a little bit, so we would drop the bike lanes at that point. As you continue south towards Flying Point Road, there is double yellow. South of Downs Path, we would look to connect that double yellow all the way up to Lines Park, Downs Park. So we have a continuous full barrier line or double yellow from Hampton Road all the way down to Wickabog.
I think the chief would agree. We have a lot of speeding on Flying Point Road. So I think anything we can do to subliminally suggest that you should traverse more slowly on this street by putting in the stripes would, you know, again, encourage slower traffic.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Is that right?
I would agree. And again, this is not, you know, the end. If there's additional concerns as we move forward with some of these things or decide to go in a different direction, we can look at some of those other treatments that we have in the other areas and look to incorporate them if they're appropriate on some of these roads. Flying Point Road is a highest speed road. I believe it's 30 miles an hour.
It's 30, yeah.
So it's kind of pushing the speed hump scenario.
Well, it's very busy in the morning with people traveling east who don't want to sit in the traffic on the Montark Highway. And so they zip around through, you know, Cobb and get back to Watermill that way.
Correct.
I mean, this is like a steady stream
Yep.
of speeders, yeah. Anyway.
Yeah, so, you know, speed feedback signs again might be something to consider on the street, but upfront, we're focused on the bike lanes here.
Does the police catch a lot of speeders down there?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
So happy to answer any questions, anything specific or at a higher level.
All right, well, thank you, Ryan. Ed?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to Somerset because originally we were contemplating making it a one-way, but I was kind of concerned of having speed bumps on 90-degree angles. I see you're putting some mitigating efforts to slow down going around the curve anyway, but maybe at night or somebody around the curve pushes on the accelerator and maybe they don't see that speed bump and something happens. I mean, is it really advisable to have speed bumps on 90-degree curves?
Yeah, so there is some distance between where the curve actually starts and where the speed hump is. Based on the road speed, we would need to just check some of the overall traffic speeds on the road. But on a standard 25, 30 mile an hour road, you're not going to be able to go over a speed hump at a high rate of speed just given the location. You know, you're in a fairly short stretch. And you do have some room beyond these speed humps to maneuver the curve, so even if you aren't expecting it, you have an ability to straighten out before you're actually hitting that curve. And there is, you mentioned at the nighttime, there is street lighting on Somerset and there is also signage that would be placed and striping to further let the drivers know that they're approaching these. So we would not certainly encourage putting these on the curve anywhere, but on the approach to the curve, as long as it's set a distance away that's manageable, it would be okay.
And I see that on Ox pasture, you're putting a bollard, so basically blocking the street. The same concept that the people on Somerset were asking for their street. Why not take that into consideration as well?
Well, again, I think these are all things that we can look at. We had talked about looking at converting Somerset to one-way.
Right.
So I think that would have achieved a similar goal to what is being proposed at Ox pasture as that concept.
Right.
So again, I don't think those concepts that we previously developed are off the table, but the goal is to look for some less intrusive options to help mitigate some of these issues before we go to that level. And I think the same approach could be taken on Ox pasture.
But on balance, considering the incidents that we've had on Somerset, on balance, wouldn't the the one-way be, I'd say, more secure versus just putting speed bumps?
The one-way, more secure.
Yeah, more secure because you won't have traffic going that way.
Correct. Well, that was my point, I guess, is just, you know, that's the next step. If the speed humps and these mitigation measures don't help solve some of the safety concerns that are out there, then that's something we can look at. But generally, we try not to jump to that most extreme measure immediately. There's other things you can do in the interim to try and make things more palatable and safe for the residents and everybody that's using that road.
I think the issue, Ed, was the spillover effect on Bishop's and Corrigan and those other streets. I think that was the concern of those residents, so this, I think, may be some kind of a compromise if you could look at it that way. I don't know what the spillover effects on Ox pasture would be of such a strategy. Just putting that out there.
Yeah, and you wouldn't be eliminating traffic on Lee or Captain's Neck by closing Ox pasture. They would just need to take a more circuitous route to get there. So and I think with all these, we're just trying to make it as uncomfortable as we can for people to not take Hill Street, right? We want everybody to stay on the main road as they're coming in and out of town and not use these cut-through streets so much. So that's the real goal. And if they are going to use them, let's find a way to have them go safer on these roads and not at such a rate of speed that is of concern.
Chief, what was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, the speed bumps won't stop the traffic going through, of course. I mean, maybe slow it down a little bit.
Right.
Talking about Bishop's Lane, looking at the intersection of McGee and Bishop's Lane, I don't know if it's feasible and maybe the chief can comment on it, but if instead of allowing people to go all the way through Bishop's Lane to Hill Street, at McGee, maybe during those hours, 3 to 7, put a police car and force people to just stay from Bishop's Lane onto McGee and back to County Road 39, that may solve some of the issues on Bishop's Lane, because then people know that Bishop's Lane is not a cut through to Hill Street. And if you cut off Somerset as well, then the traffic will have to go on County Road 39. And after a while, I think people find out that that's not a good way of bypassing, you know, to try to get to Hill Street. Anyway, it's just an idea.
Yeah, no, it's a good thought, and I think that was part of the reasoning for some of the right turn restrictions on Somerset and Bishop's to try and achieve that.
Which haven't worked very well.
But maybe we can do some more pointed enforcement on some of these if, you know, we're making it a little more challenging to go down some of these other streets. It's, there's, you know, none of these proposals are going to eliminate the issues at hand. There's, you know, the traffic is still going to be there. It's how do we accommodate it the best way we can and, you know, deal with it until some of the larger issues on the south fork are handled by people outside of this room.
I'd love to ask the chief, how, chief, how are you going to stop people from driving down Bishop's? How are you legally going to do that?
We can't. It's a public road, and I'm not going to have the staffing every day to put a police car there to divert traffic.
Well, then they'll just go to Corrigan.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, it's just going to push the problem.
Right, it just pushes it, that's right, yeah.
I think all the traffic calming measures that Ryan's brought up are interesting and certainly well worth investigating. Of course, as has been pointed out, none of them actually stop the cut-through traffic. They just try to make it go slower. The one way to really stop the cut-through traffic in the time where there is the most cut-through traffic, which is in the afternoon rush hour, is to enforce our laws, which we've been doing much more diligently starting in January and continuing through February. I think it would be interesting, if it's feasible, to to do some sort of a traffic study to see what is the volume of traffic cutting through either Somerset or Bishop's and keep track of this as we increase our enforcement efforts. I know the mayor has put in the budget hiring another police officer to give us more manpower to enforce the no right turn laws. And it would be very interesting me to begin to get data to see as we are more diligent about enforcing the no right turn rules, what effect is it having on the commuters that are every day using those cut-throughs? Once they begin to realize, hey, we better not do this, we might get a ticket, or we're probably going to get a ticket if we continue to make right turns in the afternoon. So that is where I think we really need to keep our focus, and all these other ideas are great, and I think they really deserve a full consideration, but the idea is to stop people making the right turns, which will reduce the cut-through traffic.
Well, if you make it painful enough to take these routes, I think people will stop taking them, really. I mean, you know, it's just going to become more of an inconvenience.
Right.
And right now, there's really nothing that's making it difficult.
That wouldn't waze and these traffic enhancement apps would not change, right? They would still direct traffic to go through these residential streets with these mitigation measures?
Well, my understanding is they track the routes based on the average speeds going on those streets. So if you're going at a slower rate of speed,
Yep.
there, not that it's going to not send people that way, but it might tend to send them in a different direction.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Ryan? Robin?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ryan, very much for being here and your presentation.
You're welcome. Thanks, everybody.
All right, next, we're going to go on to a 2025 official proclamation from Tree City USA, which I am going to read. We are submitting this again to maintain our Tree City status that we've had for at least a couple of years now. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source, resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, William M. Maggar Jr., Mayor of the City of... Now therefore, I, William M. Maggar Jr., Mayor of the City of Southampton, New York, they call us a city, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as Arbor Day in the City of Southampton, New York, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated, this was signed the seventh day of February twenty twenty-five, Mayor William M. Maggar Jr. So we will be submitting that to the Tree City so that we maintain our Tree City status, and we will be celebrating Arbor Day with the planting of a tree very near Our Lady of the Hamptons School on North Main Street. So I would welcome anyone to come to that. I'm not sure exactly what time that is. I think it's in the morning. Do you remember, Lynn?
I think it was in the morning.
But we will make sure we advertise it well in advance of the twenty-fifth of April. So I just wanted to make the official proclamation so that we maintain our Tree City status. And now I'll turn to our village administrator for correspondence of the board.
Yes, we have correspondence from Carol Whitehead, who supports the proposed tree code. She also supports the proposal for the historic preservation of historic structures. We have correspondence from Rob Coburn, who discusses the tree code and makes several recommendations for improvement. We have correspondence from Georgie Ann Kumar, who supports the tree code and makes a recommendation for defining the term setback. We have correspondence from Elizabeth Yostremsky, who is in strong opposition to the historic property tax exemption.
Thank you very much. So now we'll go to suggested resolutions, and I'll turn to Deputy Mayor Zanotti for the first one.
Number one, resolve the claims for the warrant dated February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, totaling one hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Warrant number A-18, general fund, and seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents, warrant number H-9, capital fund, are audited and approved, and I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Number two, resolve the reading of the minutes for the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Trustee meeting is dispensed, accepted as filed by the village clerk, and the actions taken at those meetings are hereby ratified and approved, and I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Number three, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton is considering amending chapter ninety-nine of the Village Code of Southampton taxation to provide a tax exemption for historic properties as authorized by four forty-four A of the New York Real Property Tax Law. And whereas a public hearing was held by the village board on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at which time all persons either for or against said amendment were heard. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton has determined that this proposed local law is considered a type-two action under six New York Code of Rules and Regs, Part six-one, seven-point-five provisions of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and that no further review under the New York's Environmental Conservation Law, Article Eight, is necessary. Now therefore, be it resolved that local law number one of twenty twenty-five is hereby adopted. That's your motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Yep.
I always stood for transparency, of course, and tonight we're voting to adopt a law that directly impacts all the taxpayers of the village. One, it determines who pays the overall tax levy and how that burden is distributed. And we only had a single public hearing for that. We also have strong concerns raised by citizens, in particular, the Southampton press. We have a letter from Rob Davini, who was the chair of the ZBA, who strongly opposes it, calling it a regressive tax. I would like to urge the board to keep this motion open for further public discussion, since right now we're doing it in the middle of the winter, and wait for more people to be present and to be able to give an opinion on this matter before actually closing in voting on it.
Lynn, you have anything to say?
I think we've heard, as you point out, Ed, the both sides of the story. I think, in my personal view, I think the charm of the village is enhanced by encouraging and incenting people to do the right thing, and I don't think this is a huge budget hit, and I do not see the inequity that you are pointing out. And I read your letter to the editor, and I don't understand that logic. I just don't get it. No one will be burdened by any property tax issues. So I am in favor of this resolution.
Nor do I agree with Mr. Davini describing this as a regressive tax. It is not. Robin, you want to say anything?
No, I just think that it would be great, Mayor, if we would just explain to our residents, again, what is exactly happening here, because I think there's a little confusion.
Yeah, I'll do that. Roy, did you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I think it's important as a historic village, and we pay attention, we're going to pay attention to our trees, we need to pay attention to our buildings and our historic buildings, and they are expensive to maintain in the historic district. Those in the historic district are subject to regulations that other folks aren't, and to incentivize them to maintain their homes so that their historic district maintains the quality and standards that we hope subhead and stands for is important. I was concerned when I first heard about this legislation that it was not specific enough in terms of defining what homeowners could do to their properties and still get this exemption. In reviewing it much more carefully, I realized that it is very specific, and all of the exemptions would have to be approved by the appropriate board. So it's not just a blanket exemption from your tax. You have to make a presentation to the board and have your presentation approved, and also the value of it determined by the village tax assessor. So there are controls to make sure that there are no abuses to this. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this legislation.
Well, usually a tax incentive is given if you want to promote development.
Not necessarily.
Well, that's usually the reason that you put a tax exemption. For example, if you have an.
Thank you, Roy.
For example, if you have an area that needs additional work, and let's say it becomes historic, and you want to encourage people to improve their properties, then you put a tax exemption. I think that's the case here in Southampton. The property is already pretty well improved.
It's not an exemption, and it's just withholding the.
It's actually a deferment. It's a five-year deferment.
All right, it's a deferment.
Deferment.
And for five years, actually for ten years on a sliding scale, they get a deferment on the tax, which means that the rest of the village has to pick up that difference.
No, that's incorrect. That's incorrect. You are absolutely giving misinformation.
It's not logical. It's just not logical.
You know, I think you should go back to business school or something. Maybe you didn't go to business school like I did. Anyway, thank you for, I want to just read a letter that I wrote, actually, to Ms. Yostremsky after we received the letter from her. I said, "Thank you for sharing your letter concerning the five-year tax deferment for homeowners who have to spend money to maintain the historical integrity of their homes. Please understand that your taxes will not increase as a result. Everybody will continue to pay the same for five years. And those who apply for the deferment after work is completed will see their assessment and related taxes increase after five years. At ten years, the assessed value will be fully increased, and the corresponding taxes will be fully raised on the new assessed value." That is all this is doing, Ed, and we're not going to have a run in this village on people applying for this. It's very limited where this will be able to be used. So I appreciate your concerns, but at this time, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. All right, next one. Number four, whereas the safety of pedestrians and cyclists residing in or visiting the village is of the utmost concern to the village, and whereas the failure of motorists to come to a full stop at intersections controlled by a stop sign has become an increased problem in the village, and thus an increased risk to pedestrians and cyclists. And whereas the village, like all small municipalities, lacks the resources to conduct live surveillance at all such intersections, and whereas technology is available to conduct such surveillance using cameras. And whereas the New York State Legislature has proposed a law to amend the vehicle and traffic law in relation to owner liability for failure of an operator to comply with stop signs in designated villages located with the counties of Nassau and Suffolk. And whereas the Village of Southampton is willing to participate in the pilot program for the benefit of the village and its residents, now therefore, be it hereby resolved, the village board of the Village of Southampton supports the legislation known as the Protect Our Pedestrians Act pending in the New York State Legislature as S-4321 and A-4710, which shall authorize the village to participate in a pilot program to install and operate a stop sign photo violation monitoring system. And be it further resolved, the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees recommends immediate passage of said bills to help address the safety concerns of pedestrians and cyclists." I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So just to let you know, this is the, I guess, resolution I received from Tommy John Scavoni's Assembly Office in Albany. After I met with him, and the village attorney was with me, on February third, we requested this legislation. Senator Palumbo has, again, introduced Senate Bill four-three-two-one and the Assembly four-seven-ten, as I mentioned in the resolution. And they are now asking us to adopt a home rule so that, again, they can go forward in Albany, and with a lot of luck, this will pass, and we will then have the ability to do this. But I want to say this was a direct result of me going to Albany to meet with our senator and assemblyman, as well as the mayor of East Hampton Village, who accompanied us with his chief of police to the meeting in Albany. And I'm very glad that they have sent this to us so that we can adopt this in hopes that this will become law and we'll be able to use these cameras.
The verbiage calls it a pilot program. Are there any other localities, or are we the only one, Mayor?
So on.
Requested the home rule message.
On the east end, it's the Village of East Hampton, the Village of Southampton, and I believe there are a couple of villages in Nassau County. Do you know?
One is Saddle Rock, I think. There are two. One is Saddle Rock. It's the one that comes to mind. I'm not sure the other.
So we did have a couple of other villages join us.
So there are other senators and assembly members.
Hopefully, we'll be joining. It's still going to be an uphill.
It's an uphill battle.
Based on the.
But this is a good first step, and I've asked members of the Traffic Committee, as you know, to send letters to our assemblyman and state senator in support of this. So it is hoped that, again, this will move through the legislature in Albany and become law that then we will be able to take advantage of. All right, so thank you very much. Now we'll go on to number five. Ed?
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the Pecanec Baykeeper Organization to host a March cleanup along Meadow Lane with base operations at Doom Beach on the bayside on Saturday, April fifth, twenty twenty-five, from nine AM to twelve PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolved, as amended, the Board of Trustees approves the sale of tax liens on all unpaid property taxes for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five to now be held at one PM on Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Original date, Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. In the boardroom, Village Hall, twenty-three Main Street, Southampton, New York. Notice to this effect will be published in the official paper, the Southampton Press. The village intends to purchase all eligible purchasing tax liens at said sale. Do I have a motion?
Yes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Number seven, resolve that the Board of Trustees authorizes the village attorney and the village assessor to enter into a stipulation to settle an Article VII tax lien litigation between the village and Bath Realty Associates related to property located at six-eight-nine dash seven-two-one, Halsey Neck Lane, Southampton, New York, and further identify a Suffolk County tax map, District nine-zero-four, Section fifteen, Block two, Lot eighteen. Said settlement reduces the annual assessed value by the amount of eighty-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars for tax year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, ninety-nine sixty-four for tax year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, eleven thousand four-zero-four for tax years two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and eleven thousand forty-four dollars for tax year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and eighteen thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars for tax year two thousand three, two thousand four, and twenty-one thousand two-hundred-and-four dollars for tax year two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. At a total cost to the village of eighteen thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, twenty-one cents, and identified in a proposed stipulation negotiated between the village assessor and Cronin, Cronin Law Firm, Attorneys for Bath Realty Associates.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the village attorney and village assessor to enter to a stipulation to settle an Article VII tax lien litigation between the village and Harry Theodore Acopolis, related to property located at forty-sixth Windmill Lane, Southampton, New York, and further identify a Suffolk County tax map number District nine-zero-four, Section twenty-five, Block one, Lot seven-point-three, and Section District nine-zero-four, Section twenty-five, Block one, Lot seven-point-four. With respect to Suffolk County Lot nine-zero-four dash twenty-five dash one dash seven-point-three, said settlement reduces the annual assessed value by the amount of fourteen thousand six-hundred for tax years two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, and twenty-seven thousand for tax year twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. With respect to Suffolk County tax map Lot number nine-zero-four, twenty-five, one, seven-point-four, said settlement reduces the annual assessed value by the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred dollars for tax year two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, and twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars for tax year two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. The total cost of the village is twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents, as identified in the proposed stipulation negotiated between the village assessor and Cronin, Cronin Law Firm, Attorneys for Harry Theodore Acopolis.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Roy, you've got these fire department ones.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Village Fire Department to host their annual banquet dinner at Flying Point Park on Saturday, June seventh, twenty twenty-five, from six PM till eleven PM. So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Fire Department, whoops, to host Family Day at Doom Beach on Sunday, August third, twenty twenty-five, from seven AM to ten PM. The alternate beach location is Fowlers Beach as needed. So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Village Fire Department to host their annual antique committee's Chicken and Ribs fundraiser at Windmill Lane Firehouse on Saturday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, from five PM till eleven PM. Alternate location is Hampton Road Firehouse pending proposed cell tower construction. So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Village Fire Department to host their annual antique muster at Agawam Park on Saturday, September sixth, twenty twenty-five, from eight AM to six PM. Village departments will pre-coordinate for the event to include requests for Pond Lane closure. Cooper's Beach will also be utilized as an annex site for the event from September fifth, twenty twenty-five to September seventh, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second, discussion. I'm glad that the fire department has decided to move the muster up to the weekend after Labor Day again, because I think that was a much better weekend with a better turnout. Last year, they had moved it two weekends after Labor Day, and it didn't quite have the turnout that we would expect. So I'm glad that they've changed the date for this year. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move to comments from board members, and we'll start with Trustee Brown.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first like to thank Mr. Toppings for his presentation, and I look forward to assisting them with the cleanup. We know how important that is for our village and for our waters. And I also would like to just bring to remembrance of our village residents, as we discussed in the last meeting, and discussed with the mayor, that soon to come on the website will be information as far as various topics and laws that will be considered. And as well as it being on the website, it will also be on our outdoor kiosk in front of Village Hall. It is our desire, and we also hear our residents for clear communications and looking for ways to make things more available to all people. Not everyone is looking at the paper or on the website, so therefore, it will be, of course, listed in the newspaper when laws are being proposed on our website soon to come. I thank the village administrator for assisting us with that. And it will also be on the outdoor kiosk. We will keep you abreast as far as when that is coming soon. So once again, we thank our residents, and we hear your concerns, and we're all too glad to abide and assist in it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Trustee Simeoni? Trustee Simeone?
I also like to thank Pete Topping, what he does for the marshalins and the baying generals is really so important for our environment, and I'm just very excited to see the FOIL software being implemented. That is something that's so important to finally streamline the process and be able to give out the information that the residents require.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Simeone. Trustee Stevenson?
Thank you. It's fantastic to be able to participate in the board meeting through Zoom. I am very happy to be able to do that. I am down in Naples, Florida, visiting family, but interestingly enough, here in Naples, it strikes me how similar this city is in just larger but very similar issues facing it that we face in our little village of Southampton. There's an area in Naples called Old Naples, where they're struggling with keeping the feel and the low scale and the small density of that area. They have traffic issues, they have environmental issues, all the things that we're struggling with in Southampton Village, and it's interesting to see how a different municipality tries to deal with it. I also had a meeting today with a gentleman named Bob Edwards, who was instrumental in a Naples gala, which is a fundraiser put on by citizens of Naples to raise funds for the benefit of not-for-profits in the Naples area, and got some very good ideas. I'm working in the village with the Southampton Village Partnership, with representatives from Eldon Scott, Jeanne Strulis from the Planning Commission, Bassam Kudaz from the tobacco store, John Detts from Shippeys, Nancy Kane from our village, Edie Gudhoff from Southampton Village Inn, Jeff Hall, who's a village landlord, figuring out ways that we might take some of these ideas and raise funds for the village in Southampton to support those elements of our village that really make it what it is, such as the Fourth of July Parade, the Parade of Lights at Christmas, the wonderful Southampton Festival that we have in the fall, and hopefully can raise some funds to support those organizations and other worthy organizations within the village that make the village what it is. So I'm not just playing golf and sitting on the beach, I'm actually doing some work down here. Thank you all.
Excellent. Thank you, Trustee Stevenson. Trustee Zanotti?
Thank you, Mayor. Budget is being put together as we speak with the terrific assistance of the Budget and Finance Committee, the department heads, and our wonderful treasurer, Julie, and looking forward to wrapping things up shortly. Secondly, I was happy to attend the opening of the movie theater, which is the Southampton Playhouse, on Saturday, February 15th. A real asset for this village, and a beautiful, beautiful job they've done, and I urge our residents to take advantage of this wonderful new cultural experience. Also, I attended the Southampton Artists Association opening last week, which includes very, very impressive art at the cultural center, not only by our local and other artists, but also by students from the Southampton High School, which was very impressive also, and I also urge our residents to attend that. That will be running until March 2nd. Lastly, I attended, last, this past Sunday, I'm sorry, I attended, and I was invited by Chief Hurtow to observe the police department in a training exercise at the Southampton Intermediate School. The training pertained to active shooter situations and different lifelike scenarios. It included actors who were victims and suspects with realistic sound effects, stress factors, and equipment. These are all used to simulate real conditions, and trust me, it was tense. During the training, the officers were faced with multiple threats and had to make quick decisions during a critical incident. It was very impressive to see how much planning, detail, and time went into this training. I was equally impressed as I watched each group of officers take their turn at each scenario. We are very fortunate that our police department has instructors that plan every meticulous detail for our officers to train for something we hope never happens. The training is vital to the safety of the entire community. I want to acknowledge the Southampton School District for allowing our police department to utilize their buildings for this type of training. Lastly, I want to thank Chief Hurtow, who continues to provide the leadership and character that is necessary to performing a good job and protect our village. Her management skills are first class. I also want to acknowledge her lieutenants and their dedication in leadership, the skills and smarts of the officers who conducted the training exercise, and the officers who participated, including our newest officer, Connor Rayner, who was appointed at our last Board of Trustees meeting and is assimilating very nicely into our police department and performed very well during the training exercise. Thank you and good night.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Zanotti. I did write a letter to the editor about my excitement at the opening of the playhouse. In it, I talk about actually attending my very first movie in that theater way back in the early '70s when I was a boy. I went with my father to see a racing movie, actually, Le Mans, starring Steve McQueen, and I had a great time, and I've been back there so many times to different movies, I couldn't even count them. But anyway, I did want to just say that it's great to have the movie theater reopened in our village. The DPW team has been working very hard this last few weeks trying to clean out the sumps around the village to ensure that we have adequate drainage in different parts of the village. We are also, again, working with outside vendors to provide additional drainage on some streets in the village where, again, it's been a constant problem for some time, and the situation is finally being addressed on those streets so that we have adequate drainage in the village. People have probably seen that there's a lot of work going on in the village, also from outside vendors, not controlled by the village, but National Grid is doing a lot of work at the intersection of Main Street and Hampton Road. That will continue for a little bit longer. They're putting in a new gas main, a larger gas main. The good thing is the village will be collecting money for them to repave Hampton Road, and by summer, I am hoping that all of Hampton Road from Main Street to the eastern border of the village at County Road 39 will be fully repaved. Again, something that I don't want to put off any longer, and so we're going to take care of these different infrastructure projects. Maybe some have seen also that the Johnson Controls has been putting up a solar array in the Jobbs Lane parking lot, behind Jobbs Lane, in that parking lot near Dozier Park. That will be, again, adding to the village's solar energy production and, again, decreasing the costs to taxpayers for electricity in the village. So that will take the next couple of months to get done. They said the disruptive parts are really being done in a couple of weeks, but hopefully, again, it should be completely done by May, when the village gets a lot busier and we need all the parking spaces back in the Jobbs Lane parking lot. People have seen that we're doing work on a new traffic light at Main Street and Jobbs Lane. This has been a long time coming, and if you can believe it, the poles arrived and the bases didn't fit properly on the bolts that they had already put in on the ground. So they have been sent back to the factory at their expense to repair the bases so that they can be installed properly, but the bad news is this is going to take a few more months, and we really need to get those new traffic lights up for the summer. We still have traffic lights there, but these will be much nicer, new traffic lights that will also have pedestrian crossing signs, which will make that intersection much safer because we have many visitors who, you know, walk into the street and don't realize they should really look at the light, and, you know, it's a serious situation. Coming up next week, I will be on Tuesday going up to Hop Hog to have a second meeting with Ed Romaine, the county executive. I will be joined by East Hampton Mayor Jerry Larson. The two of us have really taken on the traffic issue front and center. We are also going to be joined by a member of the governor's staff who we requested to be there, and it's all going to be talking about County Road 39 and how we can mitigate it and possibly even create another alternate route to County Road 39 in the townships of Southampton and East Hampton. So stay tuned. Again, these meetings take a little while, but, again, I've been making progress in Albany, and I'm hoping to make progress in Hop Hog as well. Finally, we will be having a groundbreaking ceremony at 2:00 on Thursday, March 6th, at the History Museum for the, again, basically the renewal of that museum, and, again, structural enhancements and rehabilitation. As it is a historic structure, we have to spend some money on keeping it up, and the village will be joined with the state for over $1 million. I believe it's actually $1.2 million will be spent on that historic structure, which is, again, long overdue, but we're getting around to all these things. And finally, I would like to say that there will be a Veterans Event, a Suffolk County Veterans Resource Fair, on Saturday, March 8th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. that's being sponsored by our county legislator, Ann Welker. She asked if we could use, if they could use Vets Hall. Of course, I said yes. She has asked me to come and welcome everybody to that event, again, on March 8th at 10:00. And so I'm urging all veterans and other interested parties to come to our Veterans Hall on Pond Lane on Saturday, March 8th, from 10:00 until 1:00 p.m. to learn what resources the county has for veterans. And with that, I think that's the end of the meeting, and so I will ask at 7:44 for the meeting of this Village Board of Trustees to be adjourned. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.